I don't either.
Too late.
I mean, his face.
All right, so we are going to call the meeting to order at 7:03. Try to do this. And I got somebody type choo-choo in me here. Oh, it's Don, okay. Your text just came down. Okay. So, we are trying to do something similar to what you did over in Port Huron, Mr. Wexler. So, Don suggested having you come in here since you've already know the ins and outs of everything.
Trial by fire. Trial by fire.
Oh, trial by fire. So, that's why we're having this special meeting right now.
Okay. I should preface the meeting with, by saying, I am the metaphor for novice. I had no clue how to go about doing this. No direction, no strategic plan. And you would think that plus no funding mechanism was a recipe for disaster. But that would not be true. It's been probably the most rewarding thing I've ever done in my life.
That's awesome. So, we are just starting the beginning stages of this. We don't have photos yet. We have nothing.
Yeah, welcome to my world.
So, let me bring this up and add, what is the definition that you use for a person's face to be put on one of these banners?
I will answer your question, although there's a different way I would go about it. Our definition is if the GI died while in service. Okay? Or if he died of his wounds outside of service, and that can be, you know, that can be proven. So, there's the answer to Don's question. Let me tell you how we got there. We have two monuments, war memorials in Port Huron. One is in a municipal park. The other was, is in the memorial stadium next to Port Huron High School. The one in Pine Grove Park is military losses from World War I to date. Whereas the one in Memorial Stadium is just World War II. The World War II component of the one in the park does not agree with the World War II monument in Memorial Stadium. And there's a name on the Vietnam Wall in Washington DC of a guy who's still walking around among the living. The government in 103 years has not figured out how to classify sacrifice. Case in point, his plane was shot out of the sky. We never really recovered the body, so he's missing in action but presumed dead. What? His ship was sunk out from under him. We know where the ship is. We've never recovered the body. So, he's missing in action presumed dead. What? So, we wanted this project to bring us together for two weeks out of the year. We wanted it to be the definitive us and we project, not I and me. We wanted it to be controversy-free 50 or 100 years from now. And we didn't want to go down the political road as to what constitutes sacrifice in the military. And how we got there was, let me know if I'm being too wordy, Don, because I'm just trying to answer your question.
You're going right along perfectly.
So, is it Brian or Ryan?
Ryan.
Are you prior service sir?
No.
Okay.
My dad is.
Okay, so, and no disrespect implied, but when a GI signs on the dotted line, when he enters the service, whether he's drafted, whether he enlists, or whether he's a commissioned officer, he is in essence with that very action of that signature, signing a blank check, which may result in the loss of his life. That he is willing to do whatever it takes to support the freedoms of the country. And his life may be sacrificed in the process. And at that event, when he signs his name, he fully realizes, he or she fully realizes that someone will put into play a series of events which may get that check cashed and cost him his life. They will put him in a certain place at a certain time whereby his tour of duty will be ended. So, the very signature on that dotted line is a willingness to be sacrificed. And that's the predicate for our project. If you died while in service, or you died of your wounds outside of service. And it's that simple. We didn't want to go down the political morass of having to define loss or sacrifice. A lot of monuments start out with killed in action. Many monuments are only killed in action. And there are some hardliners out there who just will not look at the periphery, you know, like died of wounds or what have you. We didn't want that for our project. We wanted something that was easily understood and beyond controversy. Although hardliners will still say that's not right, but it's our project. I hope that's, I'll try to be more brief with subsequent questions.
That pretty much sums up, like step one of the project really is to define who gets on the program. What does it take to be, to have your image placed onto one of the banners? And I think that's really what's very important. So, whether this group uses your definition to do it or not, I just think that it's very important that you describe how you came about your definition. And I agree with yours, by the way, as you know very well. And I think that that's something that this group has to sit down and just decide who actually gets on this. What did they have to have done? You know, and I think that yours is a great definition. They've lost their life due to service, whether it was in the service or caused by the service. You know, they got shot in the war, and you know, something happened that they were, they died months after they were, I can't remember what's the proper term. Pardon me?
Wounded.
Well, they were wounded, but they died from their wounds, basically.
Right.
After they were out of the service. So, something for this group, I think, to work on is to define if you want to use that definition that Ed is using, or if you have another one. That's up to this group to decide what they want.
Correct.
So, and then the next step, once we've decided, now it's going after collecting, obviously, the images of these people. And I know people have talked, well, we can have the families send in pictures and stuff like that. Being a printer, and I can tell you that that's not going to work because you're going to get images that are going to blow up to be this big. You know, stuff like that. So, it does take a specialized scanning. I am offering my services free of charge to this group that we can scan them. I have an office set up here that people can bring them to me. We can set up an appointment. They can come in. I can scan it while they wait and hand them back their image so that we have a true high-quality, high-resolution scan. So, that's not an issue. The other part is, maybe I'm going too fast here. The next step is going to be, how are we going to pay for this? It's got to be funded in some manner, way, shape, or form. And Ed has been, he sort of jumped off the bridge, I think, when he did this. Because all of a sudden, because of Ed and the work that he did with this, got a lot of publicity. Got a lot of media attention in Port Huron area. And I won't say money rolled in, but money started to come in. And it goes on. So, Ed, how did you start getting money in? Let's put it that way.
Wow. And you want to keep this short. Not, initially, my partner in this project was the Department of Veterans Affairs of St. Clair County, which is a special millage-funded entity. Now, they couldn't handle money because their funding is millage. They didn't want to handle money. They have no cash drawer. There's never anything, I mean, they do client services. You know, guidance and, you know, assisting with medical issues and emergency funding, which they draw from, you know, a state coffer. But they couldn't handle money. I'm not going to handle money because I'm a volunteer. Money is the last thing I want to have my fingers in. And this project, the seed for this project took place June 2 of 2017. That's when we saw banners in a small community in Pennsylvania. Now, in February of 2018, my partner, at the time, Nancy Deising, who is the marketing, the outreach coordinator for the Department of Veterans Affairs, was approached by a 17-year-old high school senior from Croslex High School, which is Sanlack County. But, and the young girl's name was Riley Black. And she had asked Nancy for some assistance because she's a GI brat. In other words, she grew up in the military. Her dad was in it. She wanted to do a leadership project for her graduating class, but she wanted it to be something to do with the military. And Nancy offhandedly said, well, we're just in the very early stages of this banner project that's county-wide. Now, mind you, it wasn't Riley's county. It was the adjoining county to where Riley lived and went to school. And so, there was an exchange between Nancy and the student. And in one night at Croslex High School, Riley Black raised $5,500 for our project, which has nothing to do with the county she lives in. That was our initial shot in the arm. I can tell you, and remember, I said I'm a novice. I didn't know what I was doing. We have a huge project going on in St. Clair County with DTE. They are building a gas-fired or gas-powered power plant in East China Township. And unbeknownst to us, KIewit, that's K-I-E-W-I-T, the general contractor, KIewit and their skilled trades decided that they were going to have a fundraiser on behalf of our project. We didn't know about this until we got the phone call. We have a check for you. The skilled tradesmen raised $2,235 and DTE matched it. That was in 2018. Nine months later, they had another fundraiser for us. And they raised just under $6,000 with a matching, you know, check from DTE. Now, we're up to $15,000 and we haven't done any fundraising.
Hey, Ed. Let me interrupt you for one second before we go too far and everybody's hearing all these dollars rolling in, which has been really great. Tell them how many banners you're looking at putting in.
There are 621 St. Clair County GIs who died while in service since World War I in St. Clair County. And I've recently scanned number 361. And I think there's another 12 or 13 that are going to be delivered to us within the next few days. We will print what we can afford to print. And we hope that with the first viewing, this Memorial Day, four years after we started, that will start a second one. Oh, that's what this project is about. Hey, who's got that picture of Uncle George that used to be on Grandma's nightstand? Wasn't he the guy that was killed? Who's got that photo? That's what we're hoping for. But that answered your question, Don. I'll shut up.
No, that was exactly what I wanted because, you know, we're hearing $6,000, $4,000, $2,000 coming in, which are some nice dollars. But ours, I don't think the Westland one is going to be quite the numbers of 600 banners.
No.
So,
It's not county-wide either. It's just city.
Correct.
And I know that. So, that's what I'm saying is just, to put things in perspective, the amount of money that he's getting is raised on a much larger scale. And don't get me wrong, I'm thinking the money is here in Westland, too. I don't think that this is going to be something that cannot be done. My main reason why I wanted Ed to talk to everybody is because he's been there, done that, and he's made the screw-ups, and he's made some successes. And that's to help us to move forward without, maybe we can skip some of the screw-ups or mistakes that Ed made from his experience. And that's really what it's all about. This is, so please don't take my questions and things as ways of thinking that I'm trying to get, not make this project happen. I think this project is phenomenal. And Ed's been doing all the work. I've done a few things to help Ed along over the years.
Oh, boy.
Just, you know, this is the thing. And I've never been in the service myself, but I feel so passionate that this has to be done properly and done right from the start. Otherwise, it will hurt the project in the long run, and I don't want to see that happen. That's my intention for bringing Ed in here.
Don, can I interject for a second?
Yes.
The unsung hero in this project, and I will not waste an opportunity to bring that up. A buddy of mine that I went to school with, who was either the liaison from the state of Michigan to the VFW, or the VFW's liaison to the state of Michigan. He has 10 years' worth of research. And he had called me up one day about three and a half years ago and said, I have a gift for you. What's that? And he said, here's a list of the people you're looking for, their date of death, their age, the community they came from, and the branch of service they were in. And it was like, talk about the golden egg, man. Because now we knew who we were looking for. It was just an issue of finding the families, which is the real, you know, the uphill battle in this project. So, you know, I mean, yeah, you're right. County-wide, that's a vast, you know, that's, you know, for, I don't know how to word this, but doing it just within municipality, that's a great way to start. I think that the best thing you can do, as far as step one is concerned, is define the qualifiers for a banner. And don't, do not, once you establish that, do not waver from it. Because then it becomes a can of worms, and there's no going back.
How much were each of the banners again?
Well, okay. I listened to Don because he has expertise. We are paying $100 per banner. Okay? They are 18 mil by Don's suggestion. And I couldn't understand that when he said it until we started printing banners. And they are industrial strength. I mean, they're designed for fair wear and terror. Now, on a sidebar, because we're talking about the quality of banners, some communities will let these fly from Memorial Day to Labor Day or Veterans Day. Okay? We didn't want to go down that road for a couple of reasons. One, we wanted something that was going to knock you off your feet. Memorial Day is not the first three-day weekend of the summer. Memorial Day is not the first barbecue. Memorial Day is not the starting line for a summer of activities. Memorial Day is about sacrifice. I want you to look into the eyes of these young people who grew up immediately but never grew old, who left the farm and never came home. Or if they did come home, they never came home the same. I want the optics to kick your ass and make you sit back and say, man, I don't have it that bad after all. They were babies. That's what we wanted. And as far as display was concerned, we will distribute them 10 days before Memorial Day, and we will harvest them 10 days after. We want them to go up a week before Memorial Day, come down a week after Memorial Day. And our criteria is they will not be used by any other entity for any public, private, or semi-private display. We don't want people to be complacent with, oh, heck, it's been up all summer long. So, we wanted a project that would bring us together. We wanted a project that we would agree on for two weeks out of the year. We wanted a project that was non-divisive. Imagine that. Shut up, Ed.
No, I think that's a very good idea, and it does make it an impactful display.
Don, can I show them?
Show them what, the banner?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Is it back to me?
Yes.
Oh, you can see them. Very nice. Oh, look how big they are.
Now, when you see these hanging up on a light pole, now, these are the same size as what Wayne uses for their farmer's market, and I believe Westlands are the same size. I can't say that for sure, but I did the ones in Wayne. Those are the exact same size. Now, when they're hanging up on the pole, they're going to look like they're just small little banners.
Right.
But those are, I believe, what, just over six foot tall?
That is correct.
And those are $100 each. They look like they'd be more.
Well, we have a printer who believes in what we're doing.
Oh, nice.
Yeah. That is one of the important things is that to get a printer, one, that you're not rushing the printer so you can get it done in a manner of time where they're not rushed. They can do it as a side job, so to speak. And then they can give you a better deal. And that's what Ed's been able to do. They've made the big stand as well. Now, these are the ones that Ed takes around to show people at different communities what they're.
Was there a different picture, a different serviceman on each side?
And there's a reason for that.
On banner?
And there is a reason for that. The city of Port Huron has 300 sacrifices in 103 years. The city of St. Clair has 48. Marine City has the third highest at, yeah, St. Clair is 48, Marine City is 38. There's no way, this is a classic study in Carnegie. I can't fathom approaching a jurisdiction and saying, this project is coming, you better be ready. So, what we do is we try to offer as much of the decision-making process in this project to the municipalities of jurisdictions as a partnership. There's no way in the world, I'm going to approach the city of Port Huron for a capital improvement project of funding additional hardware. There's no way in the world the DDA with all the mom-and-pop shops downtown can afford additional hardware. So, what we did is we took the 300 required sets of hardware. And we looked at this objectively. How many sides of a banner can you see at one time? And the answer is one. So, where does it say that you have to put the same image on the other side? It doesn't. So, by putting a different image on the backside, we now have the need for 150 pieces of hardware. And we point that out to the jurisdiction. Hey, we're in this together. That plus the fact, there's no way in the world we can raise that kind of money for 300 banners when our printer says there's no additional cost for putting a different face on the backside. So, we look at, I mean, all of this comes from objectivity and for putting yourself in the other person's shoes. The downside of this also is the fact that in Port Huron, they only have 60, or they only have hardware for 60 banners. Well, that's 120. So, we're still not there yet. And what we've done is we've looked at, if you remember in the late 1990s, first decade of this century, when they had the postal zip code realignment, that, you know, your house never moved, but all of a sudden, you were in a different city, or village, or township. And I don't know whether Westland was impacted by that, but St. Clair County, it just played hell with us. So, those addresses in the 40s through, well, heck, from the 20s, right up through the zip code realignment, the house never moved, but it's now in a different community. So, what we've done is we've gone back to our, put our researching cap on, and using ancestry.com or the Census Bureau, we look at the address of that house, and if it's Port Huron, okay, what is it now if it's outside the city limits? Is it in a township? Is it in a village? What have you? And because I used to work at the Sheriff's Department of St. Clair County, I called dispatch, and I'll ask them, what's the jurisdiction today of this address? And because of that, we've been able to reduce that 150 down to maybe 110, 115. And at the same time, we use that research in our presentation with the surrounding townships to get them to buy into this project by saying, you guys aren't going to have any Port Huron banners up here because you now have a legitimacy. You have your own zip code or what have you. So, the banners for Port Huron Township will read Port Huron TWP instead of city of Port Huron, or Fort Grashit, or Burtsville, which 25 years ago was all Port Huron. So, there's something in it for them, and something they can claim as their own. And so, the different face on the backside, we're only doing that for the city of Port Huron and St. Clair, the two top numbers of sacrifices so that, you know, we can better spend what monies we have and still make a package presentation to the jurisdictions that we're communicating with. I knew that was too long, but it just.
That's all right. The good thing with us is we're with Westland. Westland's been a city since 1966. Previous to that, it was Nankin Mills Township. So.
Just Nankin Township.
Or Nankin Township.
Okay.
See, I sit on the Nankin Mills board, so.
All right. So, let me ask you this, Don. The postal zip code started in the early 1964s. So, when it was a township, what was the zip code? Because this is going to be a problem for World War II, World War I, and some Vietnam casualties. Are you with me?
Yeah, I'm totally with you. So, it's going to have to be looked at where they lived back then because part of Nankin Mills, or part of Nankin, geez. Part of Nankin was also Wayne and Garden City and possibly Inkster. And Brian can answer that better than me, I think.
Yeah, Nankin Township, I don't, I'd have to look and see when Garden City, parts of Inkster. And I know Wayne, they became a city in the mid-'50s. So, before, say, 1955, Wayne was part of Nankin Township.
Yep.
So.
So, you're going to have World War II in there.
It's going to be the. It's gonna be the original, original boundaries of Nankin Township.
Yeah, so, so what, what, yeah, I, what I'm guessing at is this, if we get information from the military, uh, that goes back to those days, they're gonna be saying Nankin Township when technically they might have been a West, a Wayne, in the, in the Wayne area.
Actually, um, I shared a, a link that I found yesterday from uh, the National Archives.
Okay.
It was, uh, it was a, uh, killed in action, uh, missing and, or wounded. I forget exactly what it was, but I went through the first 38 pages, and they had, Aloise was listed as a location. They actually had the building the guy lived in.
Sure.
Um, they had, uh, Wayne. Uh, there was, I couldn't find any Nankin. So I was looking, but I'm gonna go through it again, uh, 'cause uh, what I'm thinking is they, it might have said Detroit, but it could have been, you know, something else. So I'm gonna look at it again and really look at the locations that they lived in to make sure that I got the right. And I'll look at the, um, the names too, 'cause maybe they put down Detroit, like, when you go to Florida and someone says, "Hey, where are you from?", you're gonna say, "Oh, I'm from Westland. Where's that? Oh, I'm outside of Detroit."
Right.
So, you know, I think that's, we're gonna have to do a lot of research.
Yes, sir, you are, to be honest with you, but the neat thing is, um, if you, if you can objectively predict the, the bumps in the road and come up with something that is, uh, you know, a feasible answer that people would understand, it, it's a lot less headaches. Did we have to do this? No. Uh, and we've been accused of changing history. No, we're not. The idea is, this is 2021, and we are still applying our, our definitions of sacrifice to those who died prior to 2021 with the, I don't wanna say with the exception, and at the same time recognizing the autonomy of townships and villages that didn't fundamentally exist, you know, 25, 50, 60 years ago. Because there is a practical reason for recognizing their now current autonomy. They, I mean, that's part of the buy-in. You won't have that problem like we did, but where are you gonna draw your boundaries? 2021 or 1960? You know, uh, because obviously your boundaries have changed.
Yeah.
So.
I, I do have a question. You start your project in, uh, World War I or World War II?
Um, we started, that's a great question, and I'll, and I'll answer why we did. We started with World War I because World War I was the first time this country fought for its freedom from an aggressor. Okay, the Spanish-American War is, was, I mean, it wasn't a war that was declared, but it was a police action, like Vietnam was initially a police action. The Civil War was a difference of, of, of a, I don't wanna say opinion, that's too generic, but the Civil War was a division within the country, and it was still America versus America. So, we use World War I as defending the freedoms of this country and defending our flag. That was the reason we started with World War I. Even though we weren't invaded per se, like Pearl Harbor. Um, you know, we were drawn into it and ended up being, you know, that, that component of the free world that was defending democracy. That, that wasn't the case with the Spanish-American War, that wasn't the case with the Civil War.
Okay.
Okay, Ed, shut up.
Um, so I guess that, uh, for us, we would have to decide whether not to include uh, wars in the 1800s.
Well, okay.
We do have one that's in, uh, one cemetery from the uh, Mexican-American War.
Sure.
And, and Ryan, here's, uh, my, my suggestion, Ed, because one, trying to find a, an, a good image from somebody back in those days, uh, not that it's impossible, but it's very difficult. What if we were to do a project almost like the moving Vietnam wall, uh, that we could put on display at the village of people that died in the Civil War, the Mexican-American War, tho, you know, those dates, and, and list their name, and, and, and what, uh, even what side they fought on. 'Cause I'll bet you there might even be somebody that fought on the Mexican side, or, you know, the, the, in the Civil War, there's gonna be some that were, you know, uh, in the South, that worked, fought for the South, and some that fought.
Not in this area.
Not in this area, okay, cool, that's, but I, but you know, when I, when I went to Gettysburg, I was very surprised to see that some of the people, they were brothers, that fought against each other.
Yeah.
Yep.
One of the, uh, names of the Civil War was, uh, well, the, it was brothers against brothers, it was family against family.
Well, it's like the American Revolution as well.
Yeah, 'cause in, in the revolution, there was people that stayed loyal to the, uh, to the crown, and some that fought against the crown, so.
So, that, that would be the, what I was thinking was that could be the, the wall, uh, that we could put out that part of the history in the village, and then these banners would be up and down Wayne Road and possibly Ford Road. Um, you know, once, uh, once that project is, is ready to be displayed.
There's another, there's another thought, if I could interject. When it comes to the civil, and I'm not telling you how to choose or what to choose, but from a practical sense, because, you know, we live for the day when we're gonna have all these photographs, okay? I'm already too old to, to dream like that, but, um, by the same token, Civil War and, heck, right up to and including, for that matter, the First World War, the population was mostly agriculture, agreed?
Yeah.
Did you ever know a farmer who would spend money on something that wouldn't feed his family, like a camera?
No.
Um, and we know that we're not gonna get as many world, I mean, we lost 91 uh, GIs in World War I alone. The county did. And we probably have, man, I wanna say we're close to 20. But that's after four years of looking. And I mean, it's just, we're dumbfounded that we found that many. Um, it's nice to have a goal. But, um, it's gonna be a lot easier to find World War II than it is to find all of World War I.
Yeah.
So.
I actually.
That's a practical approach, but we're doing it, we're doing it because World War I was defending democracy. So.
Since we, uh, started talking about this last month, I, uh, found a, a couple of World War II killed in action. One actually lived, uh, less than a mile from me.
Yep.
And, uh, uh, he was, he was in a B-17 and his plane got shot down.
Sure.
And he's still buried over, I forget which country he's buried in, but he's.
Netherlands, France?
Belgium, I think. Uh, so he's definitely in our list. Now, that brings me to what I, another question I wanted to ask. Do you get permission from the families to do this?
Well, we couldn't do it without the families. And, um, so, let me, let me give you, first of all, a categorical yes. Because, and I, geez, I've said, I say this just about every day. When you sit across the table, as we do, uh, when you're scanning a photograph, and they look at you and they say, "Do you realize you're the first person outside of this family that has mentioned his name in decades? In decades." Um, I, this sounds crass, but they are right there. Right there. And one of the things that we're doing with, see, we do, we do two scans. We do a lower resolution scan, and then a high resolution scan. The high resolution scan is to capture the nuances and every detail of the face. But the low resolution, we will use, we, you know, we, we do almost daily postings on social media of the latest one that we've scanned. But by the same token, we are taking those low resolution photographs and putting them on government sites that don't have that, that GI's photograph. Or if they do have one, it's so grainy and it looks like a 100th generation copy. Don knows what I'm talking about. A copy of 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 a copy. And, and our, our approach is, we can't bring him back to life. But if we can bring his likeness back to the main streets of the town he grew up in, two weeks out of the year, every year, he will never be forgotten. And that's, that's paramount. That's candy to the ears of the family. Because we're going above and beyond. And when someone hears Lieutenant John Smith, it doesn't take very long, like a couple of years, and they can relate in their mind what his face was. When you go through basic training, what they instill to the very marrow of your DNA before you get out is, "We leave no one behind." Doesn't make any difference what, what year you go into basics or what branch of the service. That's the uniform indoctrination. And even if you're pissed off when you get out of the service, you still remember that. And this project is about leaving no one behind.
Well, one of the things too that Ed has been doing is actually going to the families to do the scanning. You know, I, I would love to do that if I had time, but I just don't have the time, and, but we're, and he's, uh, a lot of the families that are gonna be from Westland may not live in the Westland area anymore, so those are ones we're gonna have to talk to and, you know, make sure we, we figure out some way of getting that image either to us or making arrangements to have it scanned properly so that we can, uh, can do this. Uh, you, you saw the sizes of those banners that, that Ed was standing next to, that the images are, you know, you're taking some of those pictures, I'll bet were wallet-sized photographs, uh.
Exactly.
And, and you're scanning them in a manner that you're gonna blow them up to four foot tall.
We could, we could take a wallet-sized photograph, um, and, uh, and Don knows this because we, we each have the same scanner. Your home or office scanner, and I don't care what kind you've got or how big it is, usually only goes up to 600 dots per inch. The one that we bought for this project goes up to 9,600 DPI. So I can scan a wallet-sized photograph, this size, at 9,600 and hand a digital file to a printer, and he can make it one story tall and not lose anything. 'Cause if you don't capture detail and nuances in the faces and they come out blurry because they're pixelated from low resolution, it's an insult to the, to the, to the memory of that GI.
And, and you saw the sharpness and the detail of the, right in the banners that Ed has there. And those were not done specially differently than every other one he's doing. So it's, it, it's, it's well worth the time and effort. And as I'm sitting here, I, I know if you've noticed, I've been scanning film all the time that we've been talking. I, I have.
70 degrees today, and I spent six hours downstairs in the basement scanning images, so you tell me who's the smart one.
Two terabytes, I have 12 of them full right now.
Yeah, yep.
Well, and that's, that's just my, my stuff that I photographed over my lifetime, and I'm not done.
So, um, okay, going, uh, I, uh, what I think I meant by, uh, getting the families involved was, say I'm going through, uh, Find a Grave, or I'm, I'm on Ancestry myself looking up, John Smith. Do I have to get the family's permission to use an image if I'm the one that found it? Like, the guy that lived a mile from me, I went on to findagrave.com and I found his, his image in uniform.
Which is not always the case. There's very few images on Find a Grave.
Right.
And, and those that are, have something in common with, um, ancestry.com, they're extremely small files.
Right.
So, you, you have, you, you have to scan those at a high resolution before you can enlarge them.
Right, and I, I understand that, but do I have to get permission from his family to use his image for this project?
If you can find the family.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's all I really wanted to, to know. I mean, if, like, for me, I, my family wasn't in Westland during World, World War II. My dad moved back to Westland after, um, well, he wasn't in Vietnam. Uh, he was stationed in South Korea during Vietnam. So when he got out, he came back to Westland, and that's where he settled. But, uh, for him, if we ever did a Veterans Day project, that's where he would be, but uh, of course, I would be the one giving the permission. Brenda couldn't give, you know.
We, we have never, we have never sought the public's permission to honor that GI.
Okay.
Okay, um, and, and your question is valid. Uh, what we did is we did a full court press in the media, in the local newspaper, and in, uh, the local radio stations, and also, uh, the video, uh, not, we don't, 'cause we don't have any television, like ABC, CBS, you know, in Port Huron. But we did a full court press with every means of getting the word out, uh, going through the churches, going through the Council on Aging, because that's your goldmine. When, when senior citizens downsize from their homes to three and four unit apartments, they'll get rid of everything except those shoeboxes full of old photographs. So if you can get into the churches or the church bulletins and the senior citizens, like if you have a, uh, a special millage for the senior citizens of Wayne County, and give them the information that the Wayne, or the Westland Historical Society and the city of Westland is doing this function to remember GIs who died, and whatever your criteria is, okay? You start with that. And word of mouth will, you know, because seniors have their own little networking, "Hey, did you hear?", or in the churches, and then. Pardon me?
Why'd you laugh, Don?
Well, basically, our paper is the senior newsletter, basically, in Westland.
But by the, by the same tok, excuse me for interrupting, Don, by the same token, it takes a face, it takes people to go into addressing service clubs. Uh, service clubs would be great if you can, you know, to, to drop the hint about, we would consider a grant or something like that. But you wanna get into whatever, whoever does a bulk mailing, you know, that, hey, you're not selling a product. This is a PSA of PSAs, but it's a project that's us and we, and we would appreciate any word of mouth or marketing that you can do if you have service talks or what have you. And it's gonna take more than one or two people to do this. Uh, I mean, I don't know what your time is, but that, that's for you guys to decide. But, uh, once you have your criteria, once you have, the specifications for the banners to give to the printer. The specifications for the banners to give to the printer. Once you have a mechanism for organizing these, once you have an idea of how many people it is you're looking for. Cause you don't need an exact amount. I mean, here we are chasing a fluid number and because of our research and Dan's ongoing research. We have added fifty-four names to the monument in the park in the last thirty-two months. People that were forgotten. So there's always that moving number, but you need a full court press from day one that this project is coming. Here's the date that you want it to become a reality. In the interim, we are looking to contact families. Who live or used to live in Westland. Who have a photograph. We don't wanna take possession of it. We don't wanna borrow it. We just wanna, want ten or fifteen minute opportunity to scan the photograph. We hand it right back to you and you never see us again. And our policy here for this project is. Put your checkbooks and your purses away. Your money's no good because your family already paid. And what better way for us to honor their sacrifice and legacy than for the citizens of this county in our particular case? To underwrite the cost of honoring him so that he's never forgotten again.
And this, this is something that I would have absolutely no problem putting in the paper. We deliver that paper to every senior center in Westland. So right, right there. I mean, we've got a few thousand seniors.
And they read it cover to cover.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, they do. And because I get called if there's a mistake.
You should.
And, and, you know, then, that, knock on wood, my wife is very good at proofreading because. We don't get that many calls, but when we do, we, we get them from, we, we have. Literally, we, we put the wrong, I, I think we put nineteen twenty last year instead of twenty twenty. In, in one of the ads and, uh. I, I took over a hundred phone calls in one day. Okay. So tell me, and you'll. Brooke Allen, who you, used to be the president of our Chamber of Commerce. Was the, uh. She, she, when we first ran an ad for the farmer's market, she called me up and she says, Don. We're running in your paper from now on because you made, you made a mistake, but my phone's been ringing off the hook all day today. We know people are reading it. But that's, that's a good thing. I'm, I'm happy to say. That we have not had a phone call with errors in our paper in, uh, in well over a year.
Ryan, can you hear me?
Ryan went to go to the bathroom, I think.
That's called church.
Church. Oh, you went church, yeah.
It's our la, our lady, the perpetually weak bladder. I'm a deacon.
I prayed well.
Yes, yes. I might, I might add something that we did that. I, I don't know what your, your financial situation is, but our project is surrounded by volunteers. And initially, when the VA was involved with us, they had to bow out because COVID nineteen took away their marketing person. And deployed her to emergency management and then the health department. So. The VA bowed out of it altogether. So it's on my shoulders now. And I'm a member of Post-State American Legion. And we had approached the Community Foundation of St. Clair County. I don't know if Wayne County has one or not, but. It's both philanthropic as well as special projects. Because we didn't wanna handle the money and we wanted an entity that would take the donations. That had a long. Tenure of philanthropy and community involvement. That had no skeletons in the closet. That was above reproach. And there is only one that fit that category and that's the Community Foundation of St. Clair County. So virtually every dime that's raised goes to them and their only role by contract. In this project is to pay the bills. Now, myself and, uh. A friend of mine, Jim Leslie, who also belongs to Post-State, we are the only two signatures. On that contract or for that contract that can sign a pay order. That, you know, like the printer gives us UOS X number of dollars. So we sign it. And then we take it over and hand it to the Community Foundation and they pay it. It's seamless and no one, no one has access to the money. So, uh, the project is designed to outlive us all because there's always gonna be young people who don't come home. Except in a box and, um, and we're in the process of putting something together legally that will. That will, you know, address those particular issues, but. Just having a tax ID number doesn't do. Doesn't do the job. Uh, I'm sure the Historical Society, if that's what you represent, has one. But this may involve setting up a separate account.
There's two entities here and it's the, uh, his, the Historical Commission. Which Ryan is the president of, uh, and both Cassie and Brenda are members, uh, are both commissioners on there as well. And then there's the Historical Society. Which is a membership based, uh, and they're.
Sure.
They're the, they're the, they're the nonprofit. So you've got a city organization and a nonprofit together, so.
Yep. So, uh, where the, where the, where the funding goes. Is paramount and that's something that you have in place before you go public. Because you have to anticipate the questions and the sarcasm and the cynicism that's gonna come from the general public. Because right now due to COVID nineteen and the loss of production, there aren't that many jobs out there. And, and disposable income is a rarity. So.
But, uh, that's, that's, I, I think that they could probably handle this one in-house because of the two separate. Entities and, and there would be the watchdog of the city, uh, commission. And, and the, uh. And, and the Ethics Board for the City of Westland would be all over you. I can tell you that as the Vice Chair. But, uh. Anyways, no, that, so that would be, and, and the only other two organizations I can think of. And they would both wanna get paid out of it would be the Rotary Club and the, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, which they. You know, the, the chamber has to because they're, they have manpower tied up into doing it. So they would want a percentage. And the Rotary Club, I think we'd be better to go after the Rotary Club for a grant as Ed mentioned earlier.
Yep. I have to, I have to tell you something I'm, I'm not too proud of. I have more civilians working on this project than I do veterans and veterans organizations and that hurts. At first, we had requested, uh, the support from. The Allied Veterans Council of St. Clair County, uh, and that consists of delegates from each of the sixteen veterans posts. But their support for what little we ask of them. Was almost invisible and yet. We've walked into some of their individual, their bricks and mortar posts and they have, you know, KIA photographs on the walls. And never said a word.
Wow.
That, I mean, it just. So, I mean. If, if the veterans groups in Wayne, Wayne County or in Westland are, you know, motivated and active. And see the value in this, you're further ahead than I am. I can think of a lot of reasons why I shouldn't have made that statement, but. It's just, it's pay, it's painful and, um, you know, you just. So.
In, in some ways, I think some of the people that. Are in the service have felt that they've already done their job.
Well, you take the uniform off. You never quit serving. Brenda, you're awful quiet.
I've been taking, I've been typing it up and taking it on. I have, um, actually approached, uh, a few of the DFW halls. And, um, I've gotten no response for them to come to our meetings or anything. One just automatically says, we don't have any money and that was it. And I went to the recruiter. The recruiting station, I, I went up there and tried to talk to them to see if they'd join in our meetings and.
Yeah.
No, and, and I, I think we're, um. Getting pictures off the internet, quite honestly, is just not the way to go. It's gonna have to be getting the images and scanning them ourselves. The images you get off the internet are just not gonna. You're, but by the time you printed them in small scale, tried to res them up and res them up and res them up. They're, they're not gonna produce that well. So doing, doing internet searching for images. Now, if you do an internet search and you find an image that you can track to who took it. And we can go back to that person and possibly get an original.
Find a Grave will say who posted the image and if we go. You turn the light off on me. If we go to Find a Grave, we can message that person that way to get the original image. So it's not, you know, like we're gonna be needle in a haystack.
Right. That, that's what I'm saying. That's the only way that the, doing the internet searches is gonna help is it'll connect you to the person to get the original. But. Yeah, we can, we can start putting together something. I will have Gail, uh, now Gail is getting ready to go to Virginia as soon as possible. Grandbaby is due in less than a month. So she's, uh. She's scheduled to go for a C-section April ninth. And, uh. But the, the last granddaughter was, uh, a few days early. And so she was, uh, she's, Gail has already packed a go bag. But she's gonna be heading there. So she will have her computer with her so she'll be able to work on this project while she's away, but. I'll get, I'll get her started on some, uh, design, uh, uh, for the, the banner. And, and what we do is we'll do the same thing as we did for, uh, for Ed is we'll design the, the top, the sides, the layout. And then you insert the image in.
Before we do that, Don, remember we needed to do a poll about what people thought of when they thought of Westland.
Yes.
So we need to see if we can get them to do the park. As what they think of for Westland for our banners.
That would be nice. So let's, let's get that out there. Uh, let's see if we can do that on, uh. On the, uh, the website or the Facebook page?
Yeah, we need to do a poll of what people. Think of when they hear Westland.
Yeah. Now, once we have that, I can get Gail to start. She can start working on a design right now. And then just try and do an insert of what that image is.
Okay. Any other questions, guys?
I, I sort of laughed. If you look at the cover of the Chamber of Commerce Directory this year. And I've asked probably forty people if they recognize the building. Or the, the image, the location of where the picture was taken. So far out of forty, I've got one person that knew where it was.
What was the image on it?
It's the red barn.
The, the red, but what, the Red Barn at Naken Mills?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, nobody knew where it was.
I do have one last question. Going back to, uh, fundraising, do you think, uh, like, uh, site like GoFundMe? Or crowdfunding, uh, crowdfunding would, uh, help?
It won't hurt.
In any way?
It won't hurt.
The downside of GoFundMe is they take a huge percentage out of each contribution.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right off the top.
We, we need that mailbox installed at the village and just tell people, you know, please, we, here's our GoFundMe account. But we'd really prefer that if you just wrote us a check. And mailed it to a mailbox.
Let me, let me give Brian, I'm sorry, let me give Ryan a more practical answer to that. Number one, it couldn't hurt. However. Obviously, your organizations, both of them are nonprofits and probably have a. Federal tax ID number, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if you write me. If you write our banner project a check for a hundred bucks. I believe ninety-two dollars of it. I'm sorry, if you GoFundMe a hundred bucks, I believe ninety-two dollars goes to. The project. So. I know it's, I know it's up there. It's gotta be close to eight percent. Whereas. If. I was to write a check to. Your organization. And let's just say, let's just say that you had, uh, even with your tax ID number, you had a community foundation such as we do. I write a check for a hundred bucks. I think there's either a two or three percent administrative fee for each transaction. However. You get to deduct a ta, a hundred dollars from your taxes. Or whatever that percentage is. You get credit for the hundred dollar donation. You don't get that with GoFundMe or crowdsourcing.
Okay.
So there's something in it. For the benefactor. If they do it. And, and the reason that you're asking, what you're asking is the immediacy. Because the media and social media says, this is how you raise a whole lot of money in a hurry. Well. The people who have the deep pockets are looking for what's in it for them.
Yeah.
And if you can offer a tax deduction.
Now, I, I gotta bring up something else since we started talking money. And I can, I can see some businesses wanting to say, hey, I'll write you a check, but I want my name on the banners.
Whoa, glad you brought that up.
My feeling is absolutely no. You know, if you wanna do on a, on a website that these people or businesses contributed. That's fine, but to put some, a business name and make it commercial.
The veteran or the.
Okay, and, and that business logo commercializes sacrifice.
Yeah.
Pardon the vernacular, bullshit.
Yeah.
Problem what you, with you saying is bullshit.
I understand what they're saying, okay? I mean, I get that. But there's a time and a place for everything.
Well, and, and here's the other part of it. So this is a longevity program. It's something that. We're hopefully gonna be putting these things up for the next, whatever years. We don't want them to go away, but what if we got XYZ coffee shop on one? And they go out of business in a year from now.
Yep, yep.
So that's, that's another issue. Now you gotta print another banner costing you more money. So it better. If, if they want something, we say, your name will be put as a tributor, a contributor on our website. And, but no, we will not put a commercial name on the banner. Even us is designing it, will not have our name on it. And I wrote a, a letter of copyright release to Ed and his organization. So that they have the rights to reproduce the banner that we've designed. So they always hold that paper. And, and you guys, and you guys will get the same from us.
And, um. I don't happen to have it on these, but there are those who are trying to posture without getting. Without rolling their sleeves up. We filed a DBA under the name of Blue Water Area Fallen Heroes. And. Across the top pocket for the, for the hardware, where you can't see it from the ground. It says, property of Blue Water Area Fallen Heroes. And the reason for that is we will pick them up, we will distribute them, we will store them. But to guarantee that they're only used for that two week window, we want possession of them the other fifty weeks out of the year. They do not belong to the municipality that they fly in. Nor do they belong to any veterans organization within that jurisdiction. Because somebody along the. Because somebody along the line is going to think, well, I'll just play politics and I'll hang them up for this. Promotion or Veterans Day or whatever, and it, all it takes is one person or one organization. To violate that that bit of trust and it's over.
I I think we can all see that these would be uh, misused if they were left to the DPW to hold on to.
Uh, yeah.
Okay. So.
So, I just thought I would throw that in, I'm not happy about having to make that decision, but I've already had one. Uh, veterans organization tell their city council that they would put them up, that they'd be responsible for them and they would store them. And uh, I said, like hell you will.
Yeah.
So.
Um, one last thing from me, uh, Ed, when you said, uh, you were in Pennsylvania and saw banners like this. Uh, flown. Brenda and I were with our ghost hunting team, uh, in New York last Memorial Day. And the town that we were staying in had banners just like this.
Yep.
And and that's exactly where we got the idea.
Well, it's powerful, man, and.
Yep.
It's because they're kids, they're kids. Um, and they're always kids, it would, it's been said ma- many times that war is just an old man's way of thinning out the herd of young men.
I've said that.
Um, in any case, um, yeah, I would, I would suggest you sit down and 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 discuss the criteria. First and foremost, with what qualifies for a banner and do not waiver from. Um, and um, and uh, and do a full court press in the public with any means of. Communicating, which is going to mean addressing, uh, you, well, like your municipality. Um, and using Don, you know, Don's offer to uh, get it out there in the public, do radio. Uh, do video interviews, like if you're, if the local high school has a uh. You know, uh, a videography or a technology class or what have you. Um, uh, I just did one, I think, three weeks ago, Don, I think you probably saw it, Marysville High School.
Yeah.
It, I was impressed with the professionalism of those kids, um, but um. You hit the ground running hard and just don't let up, I post uh, my latest scan on my page and then I share it to. Twenty-eight area Facebook pages, um, I'm not happy about doing that. Uh, because some of the administrators think I'm hijacking it. Um, which is not my intent, but the idea is to keep the the message of the project out there in the public's. Consciousness and until they finally get tired of seeing it, all right, all right, this weekend, we're going to get so-and-so over to the house. We're going to go through Grandma's books or shoeboxes full of photographs and and scrapbooks and what have you. And we're going to take care of this because there's no one place for people to go to get the news anymore, they either don't really read the paper, they don't listen to the radio. They don't do that internet thingy, they're not on Facebook, but these same people will scream bloody murder because nobody tells them anything. And how the hell are they supposed to find out what's going on around them?
Read the marketplace.
And yet we're surrounded by technology and information.
Yep.
So.
If I had a nickel for every time somebody told me, you need to advertise that better so we'll all know about it.
Anyway, um, I hope I've answered your your questions, um, um. I can't think of anything I would have done differently, um, somebody has been over my shoulder the, every step of the way and. It just, um, it's, it's the most rewarding thing I've ever done in my life. And it's just too damn bad that it, it's at this stage in my life, you know, where I won't be able to enjoy it every year. But uh, what it will say about your community or our county when they go up. Um, you can't buy that kind of marketing, you can't buy it for love nor money. It's us and we, not I and me, there's no bravado, there's no chest pounding, it's uh. We did this together, it's not divisive, um, it's not political, it's not religious. Um, it's human sacrifice and they knew what they were doing. And some of those kids were a lot older than a lot of us are now in their maturity.
Yeah.
Thank you for this.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ed.
Thanks, Ed.
All right, to, can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second, and Ed, thank you very much for joining us and helping this group out.
Thank you, Ed. I hope, uh, if we have any further questions, we can uh, email you or.
Yeah, Don will give you my email address, I'd be more than happy to help, I'd love to see it spread.
All right, I appreciate it.
We will not, we will leave no one behind.
Exactly.
Alrighty, I'm going to end.
One, one question, Ryan, did you get that paperwork?